The Policy Committee Meeting, starting off with the first policy is Policy 3.100, Business Management Goals. Dr. Lawson, do you want to share the changes?
Yes, the changes you're going to see on 3.100 are primarily just extraneous language that has been removed by TSBA's suggested policy. The meaning of everything is still the same.
Okay, can I get a motion and a second?
I shall move.
A second.
Okay, Ms. Parsley, I guess yours. And Ms. Jones is a second. Okay, any discussion on this policy? Not hearing any, I'm going to go ahead and take it to vote. Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Moving on to the next policy, which is 3.200, Building and Grounds Management. Dr. Lawson, any changes or updates to this policy?
There's a few minor changes. You'll see line, old lines one and two have been struck out, and then basically the same thing has been moved to be included in the first, the now new paragraph in existing lines four and five. There is, in sections, in the lines 12 through 18, you're going to see some changes to make verb tense match the rest of existing policy. And then there is, of course, item number two in that same stretch was struck out because that's just a part of the safety policy. So, overall, the changes are just mostly grammatical and bringing some conciseness to it, no major changes in meaning.
Okay, entertain for a motion and a second at this time.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Any discussion or question on this policy and the changes?
I just have a statement. This includes all district-owned buildings and grounds. Do we have a maintenance plan in place for all the land we own as a school system? You know, I know that there's that parcel out on Goose Pond Road, and then I know we own several pieces of property throughout the county. I just wondered if there is a routine maintenance for any of those places?
There's not, for all those, and some of those places are just, I mean, it's just vacant land. It's just vacant land. So, no, there is not a plan for those parcels. It's mainly the areas that school buildings are owned or that we actually are using on a regular basis.
Well, it says we shall develop and implement a program of maintenance of all district-owned buildings and grounds. Is that, so you're saying that's just referring to the building and the grounds around it?
That's the way we've been doing, yes.
That's the way this one is worded. If you want us to see with TSBA if they have a model policy for unoccupied grounds, that might be something we can check on.
It might be something to look into because, you know, I know a lot of times the grounds are being utilized for trash, you know, for trash dumpsters, and certain parts of school grounds, it doesn't need to extend any further. So, there should be a plan in place that is going to secure the area as it is and not intrude on any further property of the school system. I mean, I don't know if it comes under this.
My understanding, those kind of things have been actually, that property has already been deeded over to the county itself, so they're confined within their limits.
Well, but they have, they have expanded from the, from the original property that was passed to them. It has gotten larger, and I'm not sure in the last few years, but that was not that big to begin with.
If it has, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, well, I live out there and I'm aware of it. You know, it hasn't expanded in the last year or two, but gradually, you know, you'll see a fence moves, and it may be that a certain parcel was conveyed that they didn't utilize, you know what I'm saying?
I understand, yes. As far as any specific trash or anything like that, I think we can double-check it, but I think they're all within the bounds of the, of the property that was deeded to them. They may not have utilized the entire property at first, and now they are, but we can easily look at that.
Right, and that's getting away from actually this.
And that's getting away from the policy, yes.
That's moving away from the policy. As far as something down that line, I think we can still come back to those things if something's found.
So, that's not considered the grounds in New Union Elementary School?
Yes, it is, yes.
With, with not, not, not what's owned now by the county.
No, but the surrounding land. What's around it.
Oh, what's around it is ours, yes, yes.
And, you know, there could be some more aesthetic things around it that would make it look better, you know, and I don't know if that's our responsibility or, you know, the.
If it's our property, I would think so, but if it's our property, but if it's not our property, then no.
Well, I mean, we own the property around it. You know, you could put a fence, or you could put, you know, trees or something that, anyway, that's just something that kind of would make things look better. And I thought maybe it fit, it'd fit under this, and that we might have a plan in the future of, you know, maybe making it more aesthetic, appealing, aesthetically appealing. That's just my thoughts on it.
So, going back to this policy here, what suggestions are you making as far as making changes or adjustments to what we have on this policy, which is really what we're doing as, as the committee?
Right. No, I'm not suggesting any changes to the policy. I was just saying that in our plan, because it says you shall develop and implement a program of maintenance, then that should be a part of it, hopefully in the future, to make it look good.
But as far as, as the policy that we're actually looking at, you're not suggesting any changes then?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other things with this policy on the possibility of changes or discussion that we need to look at on this policy? Okay, not hearing any, we're going to take the vote. Those in favor of moving on with this policy as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, likewise? Okay, the next one is Policy 3.2001, Energy Conservation. Dr. Lawson?
No changes here except for line nine. Obviously, principals cannot do a lot of those things described on their own, so they are doing it in conjunction with district maintenance, and that language is added.
Okay, I'd like to entertain for a motion and a second at this time.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, any discussion on this policy? Minimal changes other than adding the district maintenance. Hearing none, we're going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? Moving to 3.2001, Cleaning Program. Not seeing any changes here, so I'm going to go ahead and get a motion. Okay, done.
3.2002.
3.2002, what did I say? Sorry. 3.2002, Cleaning Program. Not seeing any changes, so I'm going to go ahead and entertain for a motion and a second.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, any discussion actually on this policy? As you can tell, there were no changes, no, nothing in red, so if there's any discussion that we need to be looking at, go ahead and bring that up at this time. Okay, not hearing any, we're going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? Okay, moving on to 3.2003, and this is Repairs. Once again, there are no changes here, so I'm going to go ahead and get a motion and a second, then we're going to the discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, any discussion on the policy for repairs? Hearing none, we're going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving to 3.201, this is Policy Safety. There are a few things in red here, so I'm, Dr. Lawson is very minimal, but.
Right, the primary changes there, you'll see a grammatical one at the beginning, and then there were several within the annotations, some of the numbers of the Tennessee Code annotated, and also some of the, some of the state guidelines were changed, so that's primarily what's there.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion and a second?
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any discussion on this policy? Hearing none, I'm going to take it to vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Policy 4.100, this is Instructional Programming, and, Dr. Lawson, there are a few things that were changed here.
Yes, you see two things that are struck out because they were not included in the, in the model policy provided by TSBA. Does not mean they cannot be maintained. It is at the discretion of this committee whether they want to maintain those two statements or eliminate them as suggested by TSBA, but there is no, no requirement to keep or get rid of those particular statements.
Okay, I'd like to entertain for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, last call for a second, otherwise it dies. Okay, I guess we'll move on.
And, and in this situation, those two statements remain, so.
So, there will be no change to this. One more last call for second. Okay, hearing none, this one, this, they remain the same. So, what will happen is it will stay as, as is, that's why we'll be going to the board for approval at, at the next board meeting. Moving on to Policy 4.101, Instructional Standards. I'm seeing just a couple of changes with the annotations down at the bottom. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion and a second for this policy.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, any discussion or changes? We need to look at? Hearing none, I'm going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, 4.200, Curriculum Development. Dr. Lawson, there's a few parts here that are changed?
Yes, these things were removed. Basically, this was not a part of the model policy TSBA provided, and also, it's not something that we formally do at the moment as far as making sure and giving teachers a physical copy of a curriculum and that kind of thing. That is provided. Teachers have an assigned curriculum and that kind of thing, but it's not with, with so much stuff online and so much stuff being, we don't actually put a physical copy at every school and do that kind of thing, and it's just updating it to reflect some of the things that we do as we transition to a digital world.
Okay, saying that, I need to entertain for a motion and a second for this policy.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And a second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Any discussion?
I saw on the news program or something saying that it was going to be required that students have, this has similar, is a similarity, that students will have to have a textbook copy, be provided a textbook copy or a copy of their curriculum. So, it's kind of, this is kind of contradictory, you know, there's not one available in the school for parents to see, but we're going to be required to give the child a textbook since everything's online, but did you see that?
I, I did not, but I do know that Dr. Blessing did bring up something with, with this, I don't know if it was with this policy, but it was either to provide students with a, an electronic digital copy of the text or a hard copy.
Right.
But, but not both.
Right, right.
And so, wherever we start looking at the textbook adoption, it might be that we need to look at the possibility of adopting or purchasing partial digital and partial classroom, just depending on the class and so forth, and that's actually something Dr. Blessing's looked at. So, I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think.
Same type thing?
Yes, I think that's what it was. But what I'm saying is if a parent came to the school and asked for a copy of the curriculum, what would we do? We'd give them?
We would reach into the, I mean, if, if it's a digital curriculum, the parents have the right to ask and, and be able to observe that, I believe, in fact, I think that's in Tennessee Code annotated.
That's a lot.
Yeah, but most of the time, they will be provided with the links to observe the materials, and if they don't have internet access, we would reach into one of the schools, I mean, one of the classrooms and take the physical materials for them to review.
Because there are, you know, there, there are lots of people that do not utilize internet like educators do. And they don't have access to that, but that probably would never occur anyway, but that's, you never know.
Were you seeing anything, Ms. Jones, as well on this policy that we might need to change to address that, or do you feel like this actually does address it in, in the sense of what we have or what is on here?
Well, you know, as long as this group and the other board members agree, I'm just one person, I was just bringing up the.
Oh, absolutely.
The possibility of someone did ask for a copy, and there's not one there in the school, what would we do? And you, because I, I know sometimes it's hard to come up with something all at once when somebody comes and asks for it.
I'm trying to find exactly which, where it is that states that in this policy.
Well, this policy is curriculum development.
It's the development.
It's not necessarily the, the distribution of.
So, so it's, it might be in one of our policies, but it's not this one. So, saying that, are there any?
It might be why they removed it here and put it somewhere else.
Good, good event. Okay, any, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to take it to vote. Those in favor of moving on with it as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving to the next one. Our next policy that we're looking at is 4.201, this is Class Size Ratio. There is a very small part here, but we do need, do have a change. Dr. Lawson, I'm going to refer to you on that.
Basically, this is, this is a, this is language that was added to a state regulation, and, and basically, the power in the director to apply for waivers is already there, it just spells it out in policy.
Gotcha. Okay, asking for a motion and a second.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, any discussion about the, the changes or anything else that might need to be addressed in this policy? Okay, not hearing any, I'm going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? Passes. Moving on to Special Education, 4.2, okay, I've got something out of, line here, I've got, hey, no, okay, I see what I did. 4.202, Special Education. Several, several things changing here. Dr. Lawson, would you like to address these?
Yes, primarily what you're seeing are changes of wording such as disabled children to children with disabilities, that's a, that happens repeatedly in this policy. There's a few others where you have items in a series, and the old language had some verb tense stuff mixed with some nouns, and they're just making sure that is grammatically correct. And so, there's not a huge amount of changes on this, this is simply, this is simply updating the language in these policies and making sure that it is, that it is appropriate, but that's, there's, there's no significant meaning change in this if you look through it.
Okay, asking for a motion and a second, then we're going to the discussion.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Any question or discussion? Some of it's just changes semantics and.
Most, the vast majority is, it's just, especially in this particular one, it's just changing the wording and making it grammatically correct.
Okay. Hearing no, no discussion, we're going to go ahead and take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise? Moving to 5.100, this is Personnel Goals. Couple of changes, Dr. Lawson, I don't know if you refer to those.
Really no change in meaning, you'll just see that the wording has been updated to include the title Director of Schools, and of course, that is done to designees when it's at the building level.
Okay, entertain for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Hearing none, taking the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, looking at 5.101, Line and Staff Relations. I'm not seeing any changes here, so I'm going to go ahead and move to a motion and a second.
Yes, there's only one, and that's a capital.
Oh, I missed, I'm sorry.
Capitalization.
I did miss two.
It is a capitalization issue on line one, so no other change.
My apologies, I missed it. Capital D, capital S. Entertain for a motion and a second on it. Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Leah.
Ms. Parsley.
Any question or concern or discussion? Not hearing any, I'm going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Policy 5.102, Qualifications. Now, there are a couple of changes, Dr. Lawson?
Yes, the elimination of the lines on two and three, it's just basically restating that the positions are established initially by the different regulations and minimum standards and State Board rules. Well, all that's in the, that, all that's in the, the legal references at the bottom, so there's no reason to have it in the statement at the top, and that's really the major change other than a, than a slight, making it, the rules and regulations of the State Board of Education distinction on line nine. So, it's just removing some unnecessary language.
Entertain for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Next up will be 5.103, Job Descriptions. A couple of minor changes here.
Yes, basically, it's like in the previous policy where they're changing the wording state regulations to the, it specifies it's the regulations of the State Board of Education, so they're just giving it more specificity.
Okay, need a motion and a second. Thank you, Ms. Parsley.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, any, any discussion on this policy with job descriptions? Hearing none, we're going to take the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Passes. 5.104, Equal Opportunity Employment. As you can tell, mainly the changes I'm seeing is in the notes.
Yeah, basically, this policy has not been updated since '06. Title VII and Title IX at the federal level have been updated in that time, and so it specifies those changes in the legal references, but it does not change the meaning of the top, of the policy.
Okay, entertain for a motion and a second.
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Any question, discussion, concerns? Hearing none, taking the vote. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. 5.10, 5.105, Recruitment of Employees. We have a few, few changes.
Yes, changes there, what you see in line one and two, it refers back to what was stricken from Policy 5.102 where it says initially by the board, well, that's restated right here, that's why it was stricken from that language, and so it's the authorization of all school district positions rests with the board, so I'll point that out, and then it's just changing personnel employment to personnel decisions. I will call special attention to line nine and 10. This is brand-new language, this was not in the suggested policy, but it is not irregular either. It's not something that we can't do. Our policy as it exists says vacancies will be posted on the district website for a minimum of six days. I will say that when I was hired, July had already started, and so what happened was when an opening occurred at that point, we posted, on my first day, we posted Deputy Director. Then, when that was an internal position, then we had to wait another six days with the posting of a principal position and that kind of thing, and so what you end up with is you end up with what we had, where a principal is introduced to the staff on the first day of work. So, we always, and we have, not always, but we do have situations where people resign close to the beginning of a school year, and we need to move quickly, and this sometimes restricts our ability to do so. So, I am requesting that the board consider adding that language right there. This is not for me, as everybody at the table knows, I'm not going to be in this seat next Jul- seat next July, this would impact the next Director of Schools, but it says the minimum of six days on the district website may be modified by the Director of Schools for openings that occur after July first for the subsequent school year. That just simply gives a director or a principal or somebody the ability to move a little bit quicker in a time when you're in a time crunch for that, but again, that requires board approval.
Okay, uh, entertained for a motion in a second on this policy.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
And I will say this, principals also experience this in the buildings on last minute hires, but go ahead, I'm sorry, get a second.
In a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley, and I think you actually did mention that.
Already, did I? Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, any discussion on this policy, uh, of, of the proposed changes and additions and so forth there?
So this is giving the Director of Schools the ability to say, okay, we can, we don't have to post this for six days?
After July the first, it, it'd be that time crunch part, you know, school starting in August.
That person has someone they want to hire, and, and nobody knows that it's open.
No, i- it's, it's basically, let, let's say that somebody gets hired, they move up, you have a position that's open, and you are in a struggle to real quickly hire somebody, and it'll have to be posted.
But, but, right, what I'm saying is, I don't want people in our school system not having the opportunity to know that that position's available, you see what I'm saying? And if someone, say a position, uh, comes o, uh, someone moves up and there's a position open at a school, there may be someone at another school that would like to apply for that, and if that person goes ahead and hires someone the next day, those people don't have the opportunity.
Point well taken.
I mean, that's another, I mean, that's just another side of it, I can see where you need, but, you know, I don't think we need to just, um, put somebody in a position the day after one comes open.
Uh, so.
Six days seems very, you know, I mean, maybe, certainly not one day, I mean.
So, so with this policy, or are you saying?
Because I can, you know, I'm just being, I'm just being, uh, uh, saying what could happen, but someone could just put somebody in that place and maybe if somebody better qualified would have applied for that if they'd known it had been open and it hadn't been on, you know, hadn't been posted for enough time for them to actually saw that it was available.
Okay, so are you?
And I don't mean to go against the principal, because I know what y'all are up against, but I also know that that's some criticism that, that is, that has gotten, and we give them plenty of time, but you know, if you don't give them much time, then they're really gonna say, well, you know, I didn't know that was open, you know?
Point, point well ta, well made, and, uh.
In my, uh, the, the situations that are applicable to me and my job as principal at the high school, um, if we were to have a position open up in the la, let's just say the last week or so of the summer, um, it would be helpful to be able to make a hire as quickly as possible, of course, that is provided that you have a quality applicant, you may or may not have one that quickly, um, I, in, in my experience, again, and it can be different depending upon the position folks are applying for, in my experience, it's, it's educators from other districts that might be applying for the job, and that's because we only have the one high school in the district. Uh, so, so it, it doesn't impact us in that typically, in that we, someone in our district moves and then we have to rehire in that position, it would be someone typically from another district, it would be, um, it's helpful to make a quick hire, but I, I understand your point as well.
Well, could there be, you know, could there be something in place for an emergency situation like that, that, that the, uh, executive committee can make the director and the board chairman or whatever could give them the power to go ahead and do that? I mean, it's, it would just, uh.
You want to say maybe modified by the executive committee for openings that occur after July one? I will say this, right now, we have a current situation where after registration day, our numbers at one elementary school went up in one grade level where we had to hire another teacher, and even though the principal found a candidate, uh, after just three and a half to four days, we had to wait an additional two days before getting that teacher into a classroom because we had to meet this policy.
That's what I find to be true, you know, for situations.
So if, if you want to change modified by the executive committee for openings that occur, that way's board representation is consulted in order to do that, that's fine.
I just don't want to get, get anyone the, the authority to hire somebody the next day after some, after there's a vacancy, uh, I don't think that's good policy, and, uh, you know, say a principalship comes open and we're, oh, we gotta get somebody in there, six days, I know that seems like a long time with, with school, but if you're getting a better applicant, getting a better candidate by waiting and seeing what, who is gonna be interested, I mean, we're looking for the long term, not just immediately sticking somebody in there.
Do you want, do you want to make an amendment to strike out that suggested language? Do you want to make an amendment to change that Director of Schools to Executive Committee? Uh, just what, which direction do you want to go?
Okay, ma, let me be, let, let's make it clear first, first of all, was this, um, was this suggested by the TSB?
It was not, I s, I stated that, it was not in the law policy.
Okay, it was not TSB, so it's not something that we're, that we have to go by.
No.
And I think this is something that the board should not, you know, of course, they're gonna approve it or disapprove it, but, uh, I do not think that, uh, we need to be, uh, striking the, the six days.
So are you suggesting removing that?
And maybe adding that there, there, you know, in the case of, you know, circum, certain, cir, I don't know how you would state it, but give, you know, the principals or the Director of Schools the, the authority to, you know, between themselves, discuss what this has gotta be done, you know, and, and have some way of ge, getting around it, you know, just like, Mr. Parsley.
Would you, so do you want to include the executive committee, which would include the director, the chair, and?
Usually the vice chair.
And the vice chair, so would, would you like for that group to be able to be consulted? That would be the workaround if it turned into a, a need, or?
And the person, and the principal involved, you know, because that principal would have to state the re, you know, state the reason for it, they'd have to be a part of that committee. I mean, if, if it could be resolved.
Right, more, more than likely, the principal is going to explain it to the, I would think to the director, and the director's gonna be the one to bring it, otherwise, it won't ever make it to the committee.
Right, because it could be done quickly, that way, you know, they could just get in touch with the board chairman and vice chair.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think the principal's gonna go to the director, then if the director sees, yeah, this is something that might need to happen, then he could actually, or she, could go to the executive committee for it to move forward, otherwise, the executive committee could actually say, no, I, we want to continue with the six days, but it does give a little bit of a workaround, because.
Because there are situations, I understand that, that it's necessary and you're not gonna have anybody else, you know, applying.
Right.
But I just don't want us to get into the situation where positions are filled and there are, are people that would have liked to have been considered or were actually qualified and did not realize that it was open until it already been filled.
I think that's a point well made.
And even principals might not even realize those people would be interested, you see what I'm saying?
I think it's a point well made, uh, but you're wanting to change it to that?
I, I think we need to leave something in here to give them the discretion to.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm gonna say is, let, let's keep it as, or make an adjustment to it, the minimum of six, of the, of six days on the district website may be modified by the executive committee for openings that occur after July first, so that, uh, for the subsequent school year, so that would put it on them, that gives us a round, but it's no longer just the director, it's the executive committee, and, and truly, that's executive committee can say, no, we, we need to leave it.
And then it's on that, you know, that executive committee that said, look, like, and some, you know, if it's an issue, they're the ones that's responsible.
So, I'm asking, you're wanting to make that as an amendment, I'm gonna first ask, um, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Parsley, if you like that, and we could just do a friendly amendment, we'll just do a friendly amendment, but if you prefer to do a men, uh, do it as an amendment and we take a vote, we'll do it that way, do you want to do that as a friendly amendment?
That's fine.
Are you good with the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are changing that to modified by the executive committee. And we're str, taking out the part of the Director of Schools, because he, or he or she would be included in the executive committee, so that's, that's the change, it's just basically taking out Director of Schools and putting in executive committee. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, with that change, because it was a friendly amendment, uh, going to vote, in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, locked sign. Passes with those changes, uh, Ms. Westmore, okay? Moving to six point one zero zero, and this is student goals, I'm not seeing any changes here, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Parsley. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Any discussions on this policy's student goals? Not hearing any, moving to vote, those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, locked sign. Okay, next is six point two zero zero, this is attendance. There is a change on the back, uh, would you like for, Dr. Lawson, would you like to go over, or would you like Mr. Cornelius?
No, basically, the only change is some language added, uh, and Dr. Cornelius would explain that, you'll notice that this, this policy was modified in September of twenty three, so it's only been a year, but that language right there for, for tardies, I'll let Dr. uh, Cornelius take over, and that's on, this is on page two, lines twenty-three through twenty-six.
Dr. Cornelius, you need to talk into the mic, and, and please speak up just a little bit, the air conditioner's on, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, okay, sure. This would be in addition to the, um, existing attendance policy under truancy, just like he said, and I had researched some other districts and looked at sample wording as to how they, as to how they were doing it, and, um, it basically calls out the unexcused tardies and unexcused checkouts, and, um, the history behind that is, I've had a lot of administrators in the buildings and the, uh, attendance coordinators in the buildings, um, complain about the excessive amount of checkouts and tardies that are unexcused by students, now, some districts that I've checked with, they'll use as much as one minute and count those as, um, the, as a strike against toward the, um, attendance, the progressive truancy plans, I thought that was excessive, because we have buses here for one thing, and sometimes there are situations that we can't help and that the district can't help, so we're not talking about those, but this would be five unexcused tardies of forty-five minutes or greater, or five, um, early checkouts of forty-five minutes or greater, that's how it would be defined, and that if you have either of those, e- every time you accrue five of those, it would count as one unexcused absence under the progressive truancy plan, now, those aren't reported, tardies aren't reported to TDOE anyway, tardies are not extracted, um, this particular, to get an unexcused absence in this case, would not be reported either up to TDOE to the extracting of EIS, so we wouldn't be doing that, we would just keep up with that internally, and I've created a query on my own through the synergy sys where I can, where I can do that, and my rationale for choosing the forty-five minutes times five, that's two hundred twenty-five minutes out of four hundred twenty minutes in the instructional day, so, anytime a child is absent more than two hundred ten minutes in any day, that's going to count as an unexcused absence no matter, or an absence no matter what, whether it be excused or unexcused, so I would exceed that two hundred ten minute threshold even there by fifteen more minutes, and I think this would significantly help the buildings and help cut down on the amount of, um, tar, uh, tardies of forty-five minutes or greater, and the checkouts, also, I chose the forty-five minutes because, um, that's typically what about one class period would equate to, so you have, you have that also, and, um, that's where, I, I did run my query, uh, for the first semester just at the high school last year, and there were one thousand three hundred forty-three instances of either an unexcused tardy or an unexcused checkout, and I waited until the second week of January to run that, to give time for the tardies or the unexcused checkouts to be excused, so they weren't, they remained as such, and out of that, there would have been thirty-two students affected that would have earned, the minimum would have been one unexcused absence, the maximum would have been three more unexcused absences under the progressive truancy plan, so I think this will help, I think this would help out the buildings and the, um, district as a whole.
Okay.
And that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Dr. Cornelius, uh, let's go ahead and get a motion and a second, then if there's any questions, uh, definitely, we can bring Dr. Cornelius back in on it, or Dr. Lawson, or anybody, um, do I need a motion and a second?
I'll move.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Any discussion, uh, any questions on that change, that was explained? Okay, not hearing any, let's go ahead, go, proceed to vote, those in favor with the changes, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Okay, moving on to six point two zero zero one, which is attendance during post-secondary visits, there are no changes to this, so I'm gonna go ahead and, and request a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley, in a second.
Second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and any discussion on the post-secondary visit policy?
Just for curiosity, what would be a post-secondary visit?
Okay, if my daughter was getting a senior and they wanted to go to MTSU to check out the school at MTSU.
Oh, okay, well, I thought it meant post-secondary, coming back to the high school.
No, no, it'd be, it'd be going to your college or a TCAD or?
Yes, okay, sorry.
It just, it just pertakes their attendance record on those visits.
So they can have up to three days to get that done, and be able to do that. Okay, not hearing any, let's go ahead and take this to vote, those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, locked sign. Post-secondary attendance age, and this is, uh, six point two zero one, there are some changes here, Dr. Lawson or Dr. Cornelius?
I'll say this, a relatively minor, uh, you'll see on line ten, August thirtieth, changed to August thirty-first, uh, I will say, I just realized something as I was scanning it, please look at a capitalization error on the, line nineteen.
Okay, go ahead and make that change, then.
Please, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you put capitalized D on director and A on attendance, because that's an individual person and that's a title, and then the D, the, in the rest of that line, Director of Schools, capitalize the D and the S, so I would, that is an oversight on my part when I reviewed these policies, so please make sure that when you make the motion, it includes those capitalizations, uh, and then, and somehow, I missed that on my review, and then, uh, number three, that's just spelling out that all these special cases are, uh, evaluated individually in, through attendance.
Okay.
Dr. Cornelius, is there anything else I missed? Okay.
Okay, have a question? Okay, down here on line twenty-seven, there's a Director of Schools, let's go ahead and change that to a capital D and a capital S as well. Thank you, Ms. Westmoreland. So those would be changes that would be made as the, the motion is with those changes on there, uh, that would be taken care of, it's just an oversight. So those would be changes that would be made as the, the motion is with those changes on there, uh, that would be taken care of, it's just oversight. Uh, entertain for a motion and a second. Okay, there is another one, uh, Ms. Westmoreland said, on number, line fourteen.
Line five.
Wow, come on now.
Thank you.
Line five. And if we end up seeing any more, that would include any of those, uh, changes.
Capitalizations of titles.
Capitalizations.
Capitalization of titles.
Nine eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve. Yep, eleven. Okay.
Obviously, I overlooked the entire document on this one policy.
Okay, any, or entertain for a motion at this time? With those changes.
I'll make the motion if you accept the policy with the capitalization changes.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Okay, any discussion or question on this?
What happens if a child, if a, if a parent keeps their child out of kindergarten, because they don't go out there ready to start the school, but they don't inform the school, and they come in the next year? Is that, is that a problem?
No, because they can, they do have the ability to delay.
They don't have to show up.
I mean, if they, if they start kindergarten, and then they decide that they, that they want to pull them, but they don't want to, they have six weeks from the start of kindergarten to make that decision.
Any other discussion on this policy? Hearing none, taking it to vote. Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, moving on to six point two zero one one, voluntary pre-K attendance. A couple of changes here, Dr. Lawson?
Uh, yes, what you're gonna see there on lines ten, twelve, and fourteen, that is simply, uh, anytime you have a bulleted list, it should contain the same grammatical sequence, not starting some with the and others with the statement, so that fixes that problem. You'll see some capitalization for titles throughout, like board, indicating this Board of Education or State Board of Education. Uh, the only other significant changes, and they're not even significant, changing the term VPK on page two, line twelve, to voluntary pre-K. And also, we realized that, uh, our previous pre-K contact, Ms. Brenda Brown, was still listed in the policy, and this changes it to the appropriate person that occupies that position, Jonah Sazmore.
Okay, entertain for a motion and a second.
Probably need to capitalize that D on line twelve.
Yes, since the rest of it is capitalized, since we, we capitalize voluntary and pre, the D would be capitalized as well.
Okay, uh, motion and a second, then we go into discussion.
Make a motion and approve.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I second it.
No, just, thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, now, any changes or discussion that we need to have on this policy?
Other than the two capitalizations?
With the two capitalizations, because they were done before. Okay, not hearing any, I'm gonna take it to vote. Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, moving on to six point two zero three, school admis- admission. Uh, there's a couple of changes here, but it's, it's pretty much, go ahead, Dr. Lawson, I'm gonna let you go ahead and...
Basically, it, Dr. Cornelius can proofread, I mean, he'll, he can weigh in on anything. You'll see in lines three and four, uh, it's just basically restating two things. Evidence of a current medical examination is sufficient. Uh, seventeen is the adding of the title for that section adjudicated delinquent. You'll see twenty-one, you'll see some TCAs that are struck out, because you don't need it in the text and in the footnote. Those things are in the footnotes, so you don't need them in those places. Uh, and it's changing, uh, some terminology, but really, it's like the word child or the word student. Uh, there, as far as I can tell, there's no significant change in meaning. Is that correct, Dr. Cornelius?
Okay. Entertained for a motion and a second at this time.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Any discussion?
See, we have two in red. Before, did they just have to have one?
Yeah, they, we've had the, we've had the procedure and the practice, that it's always been two proofs, but the policy said one, but we didn't, we didn't need two.
Dr. Cornelius, I, as long as I can remember, we've always asked for two, and, and it's kinda funny that it's not in policy, wasn't in the policy, because I, I, I've always required the two. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna take it to vote. Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, next policy is six point two zero four. This policy is attendance of non-resident students. Uh, Dr. Lawson or Dr. Cornelius, both y'all can weigh in on this, but Dr. Lawson first.
You'll see that what's stricken out in lines four through eight deal with tuition, which Coffee County does not charge. Uh, in fact, right now, the vast majority of our non-resident students are the children of employees, and so, and we're definitely not charging them tuition. Uh, but we, we don't charge tuition, as far as I can tell, no tuition has been charged in an extended period of time in Coffee County schools. Uh, and so, but, and then, so if you eliminate the language about tuition, then you don't need to refund any unused tuition, which is what's in lines twelve and thirteen, or talking about payment of tuition in line fourteen and fifteen. So basically, if you strike tuition language, which we don't do, it, it impacts the other parts and makes us more closely aligned with, uh, uh, model policy.
Okay, and then a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion and approve.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any, any discussion, any question on the changes here? I, I think it's just more, anything that follows what we do.
What we do. And I, I will point this out, should there be a population shift in the future, and we do end up with a significant influx of non-resident students that are not the children employees, the children of employees, then the board can elect to change policy at that point. It just does not apply right now, and, and really never has.
So this just pertains to attendance, not the qua- not the requirements for non-resident students? I mean, what are the requirements for, is that somewhere else in policy of who we can accept and who we can't?
Uh, no, not necessarily. It, it does, it just specifies they can apply, and they shall be approved by the Director of Schools. They have to, it tells when they have to and that kind of thing.
There's no basis for, if they just wanna come here, they can, all they have to do is just put their name in...
Well, they can apply, but as I said, uh, we're not really, with our, with our growth and that kind of thing, we're not really, and our tax, and the tax structure, we've not really been accepting many non-Coffee County students unless they are the children of employees. It, it, but it...
But we don't have that in policy or anything, do we?
No, not...
It might be, uh...
I, I think this is...
It's not dealing with this policy.
I don't think there's another policy on non-resident students.
Okay.
That's some, that should be something we need to look at. I think, I mean, not according to attendance, but if we don't have a policy on who can come and who can't, and it's just one person's call, that get, you know, I think we've got a policy, haven't we?
See, I think there's another policy dealing with...
I think there is too.
Application, I'd, I'd have to look. I don't know, this is the attendance of it, but I'd have to...
And I might be speaking wrong, but I think there's something else.
Yeah, but I...
Because we've dealt with that.
That's not spelled out in policy.
I think we dealt with that a couple of years ago.
I'd have to look.
Okay, I just know that, that there should be, if we don't have it.
And we as principals, you know, those ad hoc waivers come to us first.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I, I know that I do some investigative work, you know, and you call the previous school and talk to the principal and all that kind of stuff, and so, I'm sure other principals feel the same, but...
But you don't have a checklist that everybody goes by. I'm thinking for your protection, you know, you accept someone into the school, and there wasn't a, a procedure you go through to accept that person, it's all on you. It's just a thought. I mean, it, it just seemed like that there wasn't enough, uh, specificity here, however you say that. It's not specific enough, I'll put it that way. But if this just pertains to attendance, it doesn't need to be any more specific. If we got a policy somewhere else...
Right. And, and this is talking about more than anything, the tuition and so forth.
Right.
I, I, I truly, I think there's another policy, but I, I have to look it up and write off, I couldn't tell you. Okay? Anything else on this policy? Hearing none, we'll take it to vote. Those in favor of moving on with the way it's written, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, the next policy that we're looking at is two point eight zero four. Uh, this policy did come before this committee, uh, and I don't, I don't remember the exact dates. It did go to the, the full board. It was pulled and referred to go back to policy committee, and that's the reason why it's back in here. So if you're like, I remember us talking about this before, that's the reason why. Uh, and so the expenses and reimbursement, uh, two point eight zero four. Uh, there are some changes here, but these changes were when we met the last time. So due to that, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion and a second, and then from there, we'll go into discussions about, uh, this whole policy. Uh, so I entertain for a motion and a second at this time. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. In a second. Okay, and I'm not hearing a second. Once again, just like we did on, uh, policy that we went over, four point one zero zero, that there's no second. It will revert back to what it was, and, uh, it will go back to the, the board at that point.
And I, and, uh, if I may interrupt.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, so that's kinda where we are. I do wanna mention that this is a policy that has been brought up, uh, by the auditors to, uh, Ms. Nelson, and something needs to be discussed here, I feel like, but I cannot dictate somebody making a second.
We had no discussion before the motion and a second. And, uh, and so I believe that, I believe that, uh, Ms. Nelson needs to speak on what the auditor has told her. I believe that Ms. O- Ms. Nelson should be given the chance to speak on what the auditor has said and why. When we tried to speak at the board meeting, there was a board member that said, "I don't believe you," loud enough to be heard on the microphone. But I don't think that should happen here. I think that she should be able to speak. And then, once the committee is fully informed on why the policy exists, and there is no motion or second, then it will, we will stick with the old thing, but they, but the committee will be fully informed before they decide that.
Okay, saying that, go back. Since there are some changes, and from what Dr. Lawson just stated, uh, I didn't think in that, that direction with it. So I am gonna ask Ms. Nelson to, uh, present, uh, the reasons of the changes and so forth. Then I will go back and ask for a motion, and, uh, at that time, um, Dr. Anderson, you can withdraw your motion at that time or, or not. Either way, it's perfectly fine. But Ms. Nelson, go ahead and, and make your, uh, presentation on that.
Um, so the auditor was out, um, in this office a couple, maybe a couple of months ago, and it was a new auditor. It was someone, we get, we get, um, a new auditor every school year. He brought this policy to me, the current one that's on our, on our district website, and said, um, "Do you guys know that you're not following policy?" And I said, "Yes, sir, we, we're working on a new policy, but that hasn't been approved by the boards yet." And he, I said, "Well, what, what do you believe we're not following policy for?" And he said, "Well, your policy doesn't state how you handle things," so like mileage and reimbursements. It doesn't state specific reasons and examples of how you handle your travel reimbursements. And so, I, I told him, I said, "Well," he, I said, "What is wrong with our current policy?" He said, "It's just not specific enough as to what we need to audit to." So when we pull expense reimbursement, we wanna look at your policy, and we want to see what, if it matches what you're doing. And there's nothing written in your current policy, um, that says what you're doing. So I, I said, "Well, there's other school districts that have this same policy that we have at this current moment." And he said, "I would like to know who those are, because we need to get those corrected as well." So that, that's just a conversation I've had with the auditor in the last couple of months. He did mention, we could potentially have an audit finding for this school year for this po- because this policy, our policy hasn't been updated. Um, I just wanna share that, because I think this is a policy that comes up every year, that I've been here with the auditors. And, um, we kinda modeled the new policy to fit what we currently are doing, to keep us from having issues with the auditor in the coming audits. If that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so hearing what Ms. Nelson said, uh, Mr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, would you...
I'd like to keep my motion to approve it.
Okay, um, entertain for a second at this time. Thank you, Mr. Parsley. Hey, discussion, changes, things that we need to look at on this policy at this time.
Did he give you an example? Who, what, what was his name?
Um, it's the new guy, hold on. But I did talk to the partner, um, not partner, but the manager on the audit, Amy, Amy, um...
Who was the, who was the guy that told you that?
Um, hold on, I, he's new, so I've only, I've only had, um, I've only dealt with him.
You know, you can get almost too specific on things that tie you in, and then you're, you're in much trouble if it gets too vague. So it would've been a good idea if he'd given you a sample.
I did let him look at this, but I, um, I did let him look at this, and he was not gonna give me any, um, guidance as to if he, he wanted the board to approve something. He wasn't gonna tell me, but I did let him look over this.
He's gonna tell you that it was not suitable, but he wouldn't tell you what was suitable?
No, ma'am, he, that's not, I don't feel like that's what he thought his job was. He, he was just telling, "Our current policy was not good, was not specific enough," and that it was...
So it's up to you or us in terms of what's specific?
That's correct, and so that's why I developed this policy and brought it to committee, because this is kinda what we follow.
And you developed this policy yourself?
I worked, yeah, I worked, mostly, most of this came between me and my, um, department, and then Dr. Lawson and Mr. Shores and Ms. Westmoreland all sat together and reviewed it.
Okay, who was this?
Um, his, the new auditor's name is Rodney Malin.
Hey, you can't listen to that.
Um, M-A-L-I-N.
And he's with the State Department?
He's with the Comptroller's Office, yes, ma'am. And then our, um, our manager for this area, who audits the whole county, her name is Amy Hewitt, H-E-W-I-T-T. And she, I also discussed it with her as well, so...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nelson. Uh, any, any discussions or anything, changes or things that we need to look at, uh, dealing with some of the changes, adjustments to this policy? Now's the time.
So he didn't say this is part of procedures, this has gotta be part of policy, because it seems to me like a lot of that's procedural.
Um, he, he did say that they audit the policy, not procedures, so they audit...
But he said that, that need...
We audit, yes, so...
He said that all this needed to be included.
So he said we need to be more specific on how we reimburse mile... So, he said we need to be more specific on how we reimburse mileage, um, meals for DMs, and so, that's, the guidance I re-
And that'd be stated in the policy.
Yes, ma'am. He said our po- we have to, we are audited based on our policies.
So, other school systems will have to follow suit.
That's right. And he did ask me for a list of school systems who had our current policy, so they could get in touch with those school districts and-
And he's asking you?
He did ask me. He asked me if I had a list, because I, I told him how I developed this. And I said, "Well, I, I developed this with my department, and then I also looked at other districts to see who had a good policy and kinda modeled some of the things that they do that we currently do." And, um, I did say that there are other districts that, um, use this policy that we currently have, and he said, "Well, I would like to know who those are."
It's practically all, 'cause I researched them myself.
There's, well, he only audits this area, so they get moved around, so-
All their area.
So, yeah, he did ask me for those districts.
So, he's, he'll be auditing everyone, their self-central districts?
Well, I, well, I don't know, I don't know that, because I know that county, um, city doesn't use them. They use someone else. So, that might be why city can get away with it and we can't. City doesn't use the comptroller's office. They use an outside firm. I think it used to be Household Artman, but now it's someone else, so. So, it just depends-
Ultimately, this is the auditor we use, and if somebody else uses a different auditor, they might not say, I mean, it could be a completely different-
Yeah, so, we use the comptroller's office because the county, um, we're consolidated to the county, and that's who the county uses.
County, county school districts are required to be audited by the comptroller's office. City systems have the option to go with private.
And so, Roseford County is the same as us. They have, they have the same policy.
I did not share districts with him, 'cause I didn't feel like that was what I needed to do. But, yeah, he did ask me to do that, so.
Okay. Any other discussion, any, anything with this policy? Here or none? I'm gonna take the vote. Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, policy passes. And that was our last policy for today. Um, I wanna thank, uh, the committee group. Uh, I've bulleted several policies, and my goal is to have a hour and a half, and if I can get an hour and a half worth in, that's my goal, because there's a lot of policies. And, and I know I, I keep trying to move them on, but we have to to be able to get through them all. And, but I do wanna say thank you for this group, because the next, uh, policy committee meeting might be a different group. I'm not sure if we'll be able to get another one done before the September board meeting, when it changes. But if we can, we will. If not, we'll be dealing with the next group, okay? So, I wanna tell you thank you, and we'll move on to the next. Okay, what did you have? Motion to adjourn from anybody?
No move.
Ms. Jones, in a second.
Second.
Those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm not gonna ask likewise.